Three.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, May 18th, 2022 Board of County Commission Meeting. I'm Akeem Ashford, the Communications Director. Sedgwick County will join community leaders this Friday, May 20th, during the law enforcement memorial ceremony to honor those who gave their lives to save others. Please join us Friday in front of the City Hall, City of Wichita, City Hall, starting at 10:00 a.m. KDOT is holding an open house public style meeting about the future improvements to East Kellogg in Wichita and Andover. The public meeting will take place on Thursday, May 26th, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. at Life Change Church located at 10225 East Kellogg. For those who are unable to attend, a virtual option will be provided from May 26th to June 9th on their website. And we've got that website pulled up here. We'll also share this information on Sedgwick County's social media pages as well as our website as well. Thank you to all of the community partners who are working with Sedgwick County to notify our community about the deadly effects of fentanyl. As part of this initiative, each of our media partners, KSN, KDCH, and Summit Media are providing free public service announcements, you may have seen those already, to warn of the dangers of fentanyl. I would also like to turn your attention to the Sedgwick County Drug Misuse Dashboard. This dashboard has already been created and is controlled by the Sedgwick County Health Department. We actually, in the last week, worked with them to get this particular tab up on that website. On the website, you will see, if you just scroll through, you will see all of the pertinent information related to fentanyl and the dangers of that drug. You will see the many street names it's called and even pictures that it's sold in form. We continue to use this information provided by the DEA and will continue to work with community partners to reach families in our community. Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, there is a proclamation declaring KFH Radio Day, a proclamation declaring Emergency Medical Services Week, Services Week, a proclamation declaring National Public Works Week, the resignation of Ashlyn Riggs from the District III Advisory Board, under new business, you will receive a legislative update, the adoption of the Sedgwick County Sanitary and Wastewater Codes, adoption of the 2022 Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Plan Update, adoption of a resolution establishing solid waste fees for 2023, a presentation of the quarterly financial report, memorandum of agreement between Sedgwick County Evergreen Incorporated and PGR Properties LLC, a discussion of the federal legislative platform, and a report of the Boards and Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting from May 12, 2022. With that, Chairman Dennis, I turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Akeem. I appreciate it. You're looking very dapper today.
Thank you, sir. I've got to keep up with you guys.
I want to welcome everyone that's in the audience today, those that are joining us online and those that are joining us on KPTS. With that, I'd like to call a meeting to order for May 18th, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Pam Hughes-Mason, St. Paul African Methodist at Prostical Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us pray. Oh God, on this day, we give thanks for another day. As we gather in this space and place and time, we ask God for wisdom, for discernment. We thank you, God, for those elected to serve as county commissioners. We ask now, God, that you would protect them, that you would provide help, that you would give them what they need to fulfill the task. We ask you, oh God, to cover their families and their staff and everyone they are connected to. Because, oh God, when they are healthy and they are whole, then also our communities will be healthy and whole. As we look around, God, there are so many things going on each and every place we look. There is grief, there is pain, but there are also celebrations of the good work that has been done. But God, remind them that we are called, each of us, to treat each other as we would want others to treat us. Father, for as their image is portrayed everywhere, oh God, when there is turmoil, when there is unsettling in the atmosphere, then the community responds in the same way. So, God, we ask now, dear God, that they continue to serve with integrity and commitment to the task within the community. God, we ask, oh God, that you would cover those who need you right now, that every community would be affected, that every community would be ministered to in any type of way needed. So, God, we want to be whole. So, we pray for the city of Wichita. We thank God for Sedgwick County, God, but we ask that you would direct everything. So, God, it's a fresh new day. So, let us approach it with a new attitude. We pray for the recovery and the restoration of Andover and every household in every place that is suffering right now due to the lack of attention. So, now, dear God, be with us, be with our city, be with our community, be with every business, be with every place, oh God, within this city. Let a smile resident be the resident of our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend, thank you very much for the invocation. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
We didn't have anyone signed up online or with the email. Is there anyone outside? We have had no one sign up. So, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of April 20th, 2022.
Thank you. Commissioners, everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes from April 20th, April 27th, May 4th, and a special agenda on May 9th. A move that we approve all four.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item E, proclamation declaring KFH Radio Day.
Thank you. I have asked Commissioner Meitzner to read this today because he recognizes that he heard the very first broadcast. So, with that, pay attention to the first line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm honored. I am honored to read this proclamation. Whereas Wichita and Sedgwick County residents have been entertained and informed by KFH Radio for the past 100 years with the station's first going live on May 26th, 1922. And whereas KFH is the oldest commercially licensed radio station in Kansas and was the first Kansas station to add FM to its broadcast service. And whereas KFH was the first radio station in Kansas to provide continuous weather coverage during tornado warnings for citizens in its coverage area and the first to use an airplane to cover disasters and emergencies and to provide live coverage of special events. And whereas today, KFH continues to entertain Kansas listeners with its sports radio format on 1240 a.m. and 97.5 FM. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 26th, 2022 as KFH Radio Day in recognition of KFH radio service to Sedgwick County and their 100-year anniversary. Congratulations. I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And congratulations, KFH.
If I didn't hear to accept is Tony Dusing. And, you know, I was driving in this morning and I heard on the radio that today was actually the 100-year-to-the-day anniversary of the President Warren Harding's. He was the first president to address the nation on radio, and that happened today.
Yeah, 100 years ago today. Thank you. I want to say thanks to the county and the commissioners for doing this for us, for KFH Radio. 100 years ago, I just want to say real quick, if you think about 100 years ago, none of us were here. And, right, Pete? Okay. And no TV, no ra- radio was just getting started, no cell phones. People got entertained by going to theater. And the Orpheum Theater was being built the same year, 1922, to see vaudeville acts. There were some silent movies. So, in 1922, on a daily basis, radio was just blowing up across the country and being created. KFH being the oldest radio station in Kansas, many of those stations that were going on the air did not make it. A year later, they were gone. But KFH did and continued on to this day. And so, I really appreciate this. You guys, it really means a lot to all of us at KFH Radio. So, thank you.
Tony, thanks. I was reading that one bullet about the first to do air reporting.
Yes.
And I remember, remember WKRP in Cincinnati?
Oh, with the turkey drop. Yes, exactly. Yeah, KFH, they had an airplane at one time and they would fly around and do events and stuff. So, and broadcast live from that. But yes, thank you very much. Again, Commissioners, I really appreciate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, proclamation declaring Emergency Medical Services Week.
And I've asked Commissioner Howell to read the proclamation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is National EMS Week, and in light of that, we have a proclamation I'd like to read. It says, whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service and the dedicated paramedics and emergency medical technicians of Sedgwick County, Emergency Medical Services are committed to provide exemplary medical care and ambulance transportation to the citizens of Sedgwick County. And whereas Sedgwick County EMS is ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency health care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services consists of emergency medical technicians, advanced emergency medical technicians, paramedics, EMS educators, EMS support staff, and EMS administrators. And whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman David Dennis and the Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 2022 theme for EMS Week is Rising to the Challenge. We encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And, Mr. Chairman, I would be pleased to make a motion that we adopt this proclamation.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk, call roll, please.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And this will be received by Major Kevin Lantreman, who's our interim director for EMS, Sedgwick County.
Morning, Kevin.
Good morning. Come on up here, too.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, I want to introduce quickly who I have here with me. Deputy Director Brian Nicholas, Major Kyle Birch, and Paramedic Chantabouli. I'd like to thank you for this proclamation. The motto for this year, Rising to the Challenge, I think is a very, very fitting motto for EMS, especially Sedgwick County EMS. This is a time for everyone to be, and EMS to be recognized for their time, energy, and courage that they display. These ladies and gentlemen work tirelessly every day for the betterment of our county. It's a very high-stress, you know, life and death profession, and they work in all sorts of different climates, outside, extreme heat, cold, wind, rain, severe storms. But they also work in environments that also may be hostile and things like that. So, I cannot be more proud to stand up here in front of you today and accept this proclamation. EMS does not get in the spotlight very often, and I think that the spotlight should shine on them more often for what they do for the betterment of our county. So, with that, I thank you. Also wanted to mention, this year, during EMS Week, the employees were given the option to purchase t-shirts. Major Birch had made, designed by, I believe, Josie Ray, one of our paramedics, who they could buy these t-shirts this year, wear them on duty during EMS Week only. Made a special exemption for them to wear them this. But a portion of their shirts, the funds from that, went to the National EMS Memorial, and we raised over $1,700 that we donated to the National EMS Memorial for fallen EMS providers. So, I said with that, I appreciate the time and the proclamation and very much appreciate your support. So.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be remiss if I didn't make a few comments because I love what you are, what you guys represent here in Sedgwick County. You're extreme professionals. I want to, I know the commissioners are, many of them, I think, are likely to, I saw Commissioner Cruz last night, visit with some of the folks that you have a couple of cookouts that you're providing to encourage these folks. And I have no doubt that many of us will visit some of the staff at those events, get to know them a little bit. I think I've met just about everybody in the entire organization at this point. Maybe I missed a few here and there, but for the most part, I've met them and I've got the chance to speak with them, and I'm very impressed. I have to reflect on, this last year, I had two ride-alongs. I spent pretty much two entire days doing ride-alongs with different folks and went on a lot of different calls. And my only way to explain this is it's almost like a switch is flipped. When you get that call, it become, you guys become a machine. You are so exact in what you do and how you do it and how quickly you work together with others, and you amaze me. I walked away, I just could not believe what I just witnessed. It was incredible. And so, Sedgwick County can be thrilled. We have a very, very professional EMS organization. Thank you for your leadership, Major Lantreman. I really appreciate what you're doing. And thank you to all your staff. They're tremendous and they're all heroes, in my opinion. And I hope we can do everything we can to encourage more folks to come to EMS and offer some opportunities for some more paramedics. And we'd like to see these folks stay and be rewarded in their salary if we can do that through our budget this year. But we want to keep them and hopefully add to your team if we can this year. But I want to say thank you for all you do. This is very well deserved, and I'm glad we have a chance to recognize you all this day. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you all for being here. Last night was pretty. I had some nice conversations. Shanna, is it, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we had a nice conversation. Well, it wasn't. I wouldn't say it was nice because we talked about overdoses. I wondered if any of you, in light of what's happening with fentanyl overdoses and just overdoses in general, can you give us any sort of indication or would any of you be willing to speak about what you're seeing today on the streets?
Want to talk about it?
Don't be shy.
Don't be shy. I can tell you, I can tell you that it takes a toll on, on not only the providers' well-being, things like that, because they're seeing not only fentanyl overdoses but other events that are, that, you know, get stuck in their mind. And whether they know it or not, it has long-term effects on EMS providers. And, and I can just imagine the providers that are on the streets daily running these fentanyl overdoses, these sometimes very young individuals that are unfortunately losing their lives to fentanyl. And, you know, that takes, that takes a toll on our community as a whole. So, and it also does our providers.
Yeah, so, another conversation I had with a paramedic who's not here right now, but she mentioned how she had the same person overdose twice in one day. It's, the reality of this situation is really dire, and understanding substance misuse and our ability to fund things that will work is really dire, not only for the individual, but it's dire for you guys as well. Because we also need to provide more mental health days, is what I heard, taking care of yourself so that you can take care of our community. And hopefully we'll be able to, to make that work. Last year, we were able to get 12 visits instead of three to impact. So, I hope that folks are utilizing that service. I know it's only once a month, but it's better than not having it. And so, I hope that we're able to keep that at the forefront of those who might need access to that service. But I just, I appreciate what you guys do. You guys are a genuine group of people who truly come across as really selfless in what you do. And so, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. I couldn't imagine doing what you guys do every day and at the, at the level in which you do it. You guys are running into emergencies when I'm running out. So, thank you for all you do and thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much.
Again, thank you for everything. I really intended to go last night, but my optometrist dilated my eyes at about 4:00 o'clock, and I figured that I'd need you to scrape me off the highway if I did drive out there. So.
We appreciate it. And I kind of felt to mention, it is so much more, I mean, the field-level paramedics and EMTs and AMTs that are, you know, running many, many more calls daily with, you know, fewer resources. You know, you hit the nail on the head, Commissioner Cruz, that their mental health is important, and they've had to go a lot in the last few years. The pandemic exacerbated that. And so, I hope that they do find those resources if they need them. We have a great team, Mr. Howell said. And it's not only the field providers. We have, you know, great educators. Our logistics staff is awesome, billing, support, administration. I think we're top-notch, and I look forward to this service rising even higher. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Major. I appreciate you all being here and thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, proclamation declaring National Public Works Week.
Thank you. I think we have a video first. Thank you for showing the video. You got cool toys. I know Commissioner Howell and I got to drive some of them, and we appreciate it. But I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas public works services provide in our community, provided in our community, are integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, highways, bridges, drainage improvements, environmental services, household hazardous wastes, and noxious weed control. And whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on those amenities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these amenities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is especially dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is substantially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 15th to the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in Sedgwick County. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Move to approve. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And today, we have Jim Weber, Director of Public Works, here to receive proclamation. Welcome, Jim.
Yeah, thank you. Since 1960, the American Public Works Association has sponsored National Public Works Week. Across North America, our more than 40,000 members in the U.S. and Canada use this week to energize and educate the public on the importance of the contribution of public works to our daily lives, planning, building, managing, and operating the heart of our local communities and building the quality of life. This year's poster is over here on my left. APWA is proud to announce the theme of Ready and Resilient for the 2022 National Public Works Week poster. Within every public work professional lies a superhero, and I kind of hate saying that after you just did EMS, okay? But I've got to work maybe to not have the same day next year. So, which is dramatically represented in this year's poster. Public Works professionals are always ready to serve their communities and resilient as ever in their abilities to pick themselves up off the ground after encountering challenges. The Ready and Resilient theme highlights the ability of these professionals to perform regular public works duties and be ready at a moment's notice to act as first responders during natural disasters and overcome trials seen in the field. Public Works helps maintain a community's strength by working together to provide an infrastructure of services. Public Works provides togetherness needed for collaboration with other stakeholders in capital projects, infrastructure solutions, and quality of life services. And we do thank you for the proclamation.
Well, thanks, Jim. I appreciate it. It's kind of fitting that this week we start recognizing a number of organizations, and there are even more that we should recognize this week, especially it's been a little over two weeks now since the Andover tornado. And immediately after that, we had Public Works out helping get the area cleaned up. We had EMS out making sure that our citizens were cared for. We had fire out, disconnecting power lines and going house to house, verifying that everyone was safe. And we had our emergency management out, and they went to every single home in Sedgwick County and started moving over into Butler County. So, the work of our professionals across the board is fantastic. And it's great to recognize them individually on weeks like this, but I want to make sure that I recognize all of our 3,000 employees.
Well, I was proud to be part of the team, and, you know, the tornado is a good example that all these groups were down in the Emergency Operations Center that night, getting things going and working together. And so, that's, that's what we do with them.
That's what you do.
That's what we do.
Thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointment. Item H, accept the resignation of Ashlyn Riggs from the Sedgwick County Third District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoon.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My Papoon County Counselor, Ms. Riggs has given her resignation to the Third District Citizens Advisory Board, the Chairman's Citizen Advisory Board, and we'd ask that you accept her resignation.
Well, thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank Ashlyn Riggs. She's a graduating senior this year from Mountain Cheney. She was a very valuable member of my Citizens Advisory Board, and I thank her very much. Each year, we try and rotate out seniors to serve on the Citizens Advisory Board. So, she's going to go to WSU this coming year. She's also got a job, so she's going to be pretty busy. But that means that I have an opening now for an upcoming senior in high school to serve on my Citizens Advisory Board. So, anyone out there that are hearing this, why, get ahold of our secretaries. I am looking for a senior that is willing to spend one night a month helping advise this board, myself specifically, on actions that are going to come before the board. So, again, I thank Ashlyn very much. I appreciate her service, and I move that we accept the resignation. We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
New business. Item I, legislative update.
Well, good morning, Tanya. And we also have Jason and Jessica in the audience that are going to brief us today. So, we look forward to the update.
That's correct. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. As I think you all are aware, the Kansas Legislature will be planning to return on Monday, May 23rd, that we think will be the end of the veto session. And so, this has been a very busy and lively session this year, and we have been in constant contact with our lobbyist group, Watkins Public Strategy, and as you mentioned, Jason Watkins and Jessica Lucas, who has been working with us the last four legislative sessions. And so, they are here this morning, not only to give us a legislative update, but also to talk about what they've to talk about what they've accomplished on Sedgwick County's behalf and some work that we still have yet to do. So I am very happy to, to turn over the podium this morning to Jessica Lucas to give us those updates.
Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning. Good morning, Jessica Lucas, here on behalf of Watkins Public Strategies, and I do want to start just thanking all of you. Jason and I really appreciate the opportunity to represent the Commission and Sedgwick County. Obviously, it's especially important to us considering we both make our home here and on this day where we've been talking about heroes, a lot of the accomplishments that we will talk about will impact so many more of the men and women doing the work. And so I'm really proud of what we've been able to accomplish this session. I think it's been a really good year and something for us to continue to build on. So as Tanya mentioned, just kind of where things are at right now, we do return on Monday. This is an atypical year because of the question marks that are still out there regarding redistricting, so if you will, kind of role has been kept open. We'll return Monday. At this point, if there is no instruction provided in regard to the maps, we're anticipating we will only be there one day, but that will likely not be the end. And there is a couple of pieces of business that could happen on Monday that I will talk about as I, as I work through, kind of how things have, have gone this year. So, you guys presented your agenda to us and I distinctly remember sitting in our office and, and saying to Jason, "There's a lot of appropriations on this request." Your budget, or your, your agenda for the first time in, in my memory was largely about additional resources. Fortunately, the state had additional resources and there are millions of dollars that are going to be coming into Sedgwick County and helping your staff that are able to do their work and hopefully help your, aid your efforts in recruiting and retaining folks to do those jobs. So, I think probably the biggest interest and something that's been talked about a lot is the mental health hospital. So we did secure and the governor signed this week $15 million in the budget for a mental health hospital. In the budget was also $10 million for 988 funding. However, that still needs a policy authorization to pass. I am hopeful that this will be one of those actions that's taken on Monday. The only remaining piece to that is that the Senate needs to run what's called a CCR. And so if the Senate runs that on Monday, then we will be moving forward with the ability to authorize that $10 million for 988 funding. Also saw a 4% rate increase of Medicaid rates for behavioral health, 8.6 million in community corrections funding. The IDD community saw a 25% reimbursement rate increase, which is over $100 million. 800,000 in new money for health departments, that's system-wide, so Sedgwick County will see a piece of that. And then the last piece that I want to talk about, there's full funding of the, so the CMHC is the new CCBHC model. The reason I'm bringing that up is there was a point in time where it appeared as if there may be a cap put on those dollars, or, and so what that would mean is even though our CMHC may have $100 worth of cost, if there's a cap, we could end up only receiving $90, $95 for that. So fortunately, we were able to work with Kyle Kessler and legislators and there was no cap imposed, so, so full funding for the CCBHC model. So that's some accomplishments specific to your agenda and what you outlined that you wanted us to work on. So, again, really, really excited about that. There's always in the work that we do what I would call playing defense, so there's bills that folks introduce that ultimately you direct to us, "Yeah, we're not, we're not comfortable with this." So, a couple of key things that I think are important to note that did not become, that were not enacted in law. Property tax refunds to business owners impacted by COVID. There were dollars allocated in the budget to be able to help businesses impacted by COVID, but fortunately, that's not going to come out of your resource pool. And secondly, there were a lot of changes in regard to election law, specifically ballot boxes. There was no law enacted that will change the ballot box operations that you currently have. Still outstanding is Spark, Spark funding for the mental health hospital. Sedgwick County made a request of 40 million. Spark has not, there, there's a seven-member Spark Advisory Board. They have not made their final determinations. We are hopeful and pushing hard that at least 25 million of, of the $40 million request is funded for that purpose, which would give us a total of 40 million if you consider the 15 million that we already have allocated. And then, of course, the 988 policy that I mentioned. Also on your agenda was reference to broadband policy. So we know that in, also through Spark, there is $103 million dedicated at the state level for broadband investments, and we also know we're getting infrastructure money. The feds still have not determined exactly the amount that's going to come to Kansas, but all of those present opportunities for funding in the Sedgwick County area to build out broadband. I will stop, I'm going to say one more thing and then I'll, I'll pause for questions. We also had House Bill 2676, which was introduced late, was a no-brainer. Everyone was good with it. It came through the local government committee and those, both in the Senate and the House, those committees just didn't do a lot. So even though it passed one chamber, there was no vehicle to move that through to the end of the process. So I think that's an easy lift for next year. We have the language, we'll be able to get that reintroduced as a bill, provided you're still comfortable with that on your next agenda, and get that through the process very quickly next year. So it, it had no hiccups, it just was in a committee that didn't provide us a lot of tools once we ran against the deadline. Couple other things on your agenda were charter commission. That continues to face strong opposition because of Johnson County issues. We're, we are just in an unfortunate position there, but certainly willing to continue to pursue that. Suspended driver's license law changes, I think opportunity exists there, but again needs concrete proposed solutions. Senate Bill 367 reforms, that was a conversation that happened going into the session and has a lot of support, including from our Sedgwick County leaders, Mark Bennett and Sheriff Easter. There are some challenges there with current leadership, and I think if that changes, we will be able to see opportunities in the future. Stormwater mitigation was another item you had, and then the exploration place tax exemption. So with that, I will pause for questions and then we can talk about maybe what, what we start to do now to prepare for 2023.
Well, thank you, Jessica. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I apologize for my passion on that little bill, 2676. It was late and that's, and that is, and that's a great point to be made. We should have started that a little bit earlier, but I, I think I fault myself for not getting that out a little bit earlier in the session, so. Anyway, I have no doubt that will pass probably first thing next year, so. It's a, it's a simple bill, probably even on consent agenda perhaps, we'll see how that goes. Anyway, some of these laws are, are big issues. The suspended driver's license issue, I, I've been focused on that for a number of years now. I, I really think it's a, it's a big issue for our county and I'm glad that's on our platform. I didn't, I did not actually expect to see changes necessarily the first year we're, we're discussing, you know, solutions to that. But sometimes these things take years and I think 367 actually had some good momentum, but you're absolutely right. There were some folks that I think for other reasons decided to oppose some of those changes. They have some history that they are aware of and they're, I think they, they don't understand exactly the importance of how that, how important that is to Sedgwick County. So I have no doubt, well, I hope that the, the commission here will keep these items on our list and we'll try again next year. As you know, and I'd like to hear your, your opinion on this, but sometimes these things take years for the idea to be introduced and then people to soften up. I think charter commission's lost. I don't think we're going to get any, I, I just assume give up on that. I think it's just based on misunderstanding and we can't get people to change their thinking on it, so I, I don't think it's ever going to pass. It's unfortunate they don't understand exactly why this is good for Sedgwick County. But having said that, I give up on it. Overall, I think it was a pretty good session and I know you all worked very hard for Sedgwick County and I want to say thank you for your great work and I appreciate what you do. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. We appreciate that. I always use the analogy in regard to Senate Bill 367 and, and other bills and things that take time, what the legislative process is a marathon until it's a sprint. So we are moving and trying to go and then suddenly it is like happening and happens very quickly. So, yeah, I don't think it's anything that we want to stop pursuing as long as it remains important to you and, and we'll keep doing that and there will be a point where it will finally go and, and we'll get it to the end of the finish line.
I would also just like to add that, you know, I think I testified on, I don't know how many trips I made to speak at this last year, but I made a lot of trips, and I think I testified on about half dozen bills at least. Most of those bills did move forward, at least a little bit, and we saw a great support, I think, on most of the bills we talked about. And so I was really pleased that we, we did have engagement from Sedgwick County in numbers, number of different ways, and I, and you guys have always been there. Even when I showed up in a committee, you were there. So, again, thank you for your, for your help in getting us to be effective. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Jessica and Jason, for being here. Can you clarify, let's talk about the state mental health hospital. It's not something that the county's going to build or run. But, so 15 million is signed off and dedicated towards the capital costs of a mental health hospital?
Yes.
Is that secured and done?
That is secured and done. There is a process for which those dollars will be allocated. So there is a committee that has been assigned to review what that looks like. We would need to, all the folks involved would need to go and present to that committee at the appropriate time, and then they'll essentially release those dollars.
Okay. And then, so unless the commission feels differently, you know, we're, we're not stuck on a, a location to be downtown Wichita, even in Sedgwick County. I think we've always talked about somewhere in this region to relieve, so don't let that be a distraction if somebody pulls that out. Tell me, explain the 10 million 90-day, what is that?
988. The 988 funding. So the new, so the federal government passed an unfunded mandate to provide support for folks who are having mental health issues, and rather than call 911, beginning on July 16th, they can call 988. My apologies if I didn't enunciate that clearly. So that's what the funding is for, because we know that line is going to be available, people can start calling then. Obviously, there's going to be work to do to let people know, you're not just going to wake up on July 16th and know you need to call 988. So we have a lot of education and those dollars are designed to provide services as well as help get the public to recognize that's the tool to call.
Okay, and we've had some budget discussions. We don't even know the impact on how many, how much staffing and how much infrastructure we're going to need, so I assume we get part of that 10 million to help stand up our 988.
I'll let Tim speak to how that's going to work.
Yes, the Comcare Call Center will be one of three call centers in the state that will be taking those 988 calls. They have received a planning grant and they've been working on staffing up in anticipation of the increase. We know for sure that it will increase the call volume. We don't know yet how much that increase is going to be, but we're preparing daily to be ready for that switch-over.
Okay. So then lastly is the Spark application to help add to the cost of the state mental health hospital? And so there's nothing we can do unless if we know somebody on the Spark Committee that can encourage to?
It's, so it's going to be a decision largely made by that seven-member advisory committee. Folks that are on that and we're talking with, with everyone about the importance of this funding, but those from Wichita who serve on that are Senate President Ty Masterson, John Rolf of the Restaurant Group, not the Wichita Chamber, and Mr. Bill Pickard of BKD. So certainly if you have relationships with them or any of the others, the other four committee members are Lieutenant Governor David Tolland, Secretary of Administration, DeAngelo Burns Wallace, and then Speaker Ron Reichman and Greg Orman.
Thank you. That's all questions. Thanks again for all the work you did.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Well, thanks to Jason and Jessica for all the work they did this year. I, I know that Commissioner Lopez and I talk to each week. In addition, I think every single commissioner made at least one trip, several, of us made several trips up to Topeka and you supported each one of those visits when we went up to help us work different issues that were happening. Really, our, what your successes were, both in getting the things that we had on our legislative agenda passed and stopping things that weren't on our legislative agenda that were going to damage Sedgwick County. So it was a twofold win, honestly, on our part, and without your help, we might have lost some of those things that could have impacted us very significantly, so thank you for that. As far as the charter commissions, I think the easiest way to get that passed is let's just say, "Hey, let's implement it and send a bus up to Johnson County and start bringing them down here because it's in statute they got to serve." And we'll tell them, we want them to work on stuff like blight or something in our neighborhoods. And once we do that, why, they're all going to go back up and say it's the greatest thing since sliced bread, just pass it for Sedgwick County. So, I, I just am amazed we can't get that through. As far as the mental health, with the regional mental health hospital, I've got my fingers crossed right now. I think that we've got a great chance that that might happen, and I appreciate all the work that you all have done. It probably isn't going exactly the way we thought, but the outcome is what's most important. And the outcome looks like we may get $40 million. And we never thought we'd build a regional mental health facility, but it sounds like the money would come to Sedgwick County and we'll build it and give it back to the state, which is fine with me. I don't have a problem with that. We've got great folks in procurement and public works that can handle things like that. So there's been some great wins and some, and we stopped what could have been some great losses. And so thank you very much for everything that you've done. As we go into next year, I know Chris Abrams in the audience right now, he, he pushed to get through the, the way to take care of problem properties. There's a sunset on that, so we're going to have to go back to the well again and make sure that they understand now that the sunset is going to expire, that it's something we need to continue. Hopefully, we don't end up with a sunset next time because they'll see that we do have the best intentions of the community in mind as, as we work those. So, really, I don't know, things like 988, community corrections, a lot of the funding that we got moving, I, I think is very positive. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Well, and I will just say, as, you know, we are always happy to talk about what next year's agenda looks like and if there are things that you guys are in universal agreement on before you have the formal discussion, you know, we can start now to get bills drafted and, and do some things, so just always keep that in mind. And like I said, 2676 is, is teed up and will be easy to convert. The last thing before I step down that I'd be remiss not to mention, and I know I have said this before, but it's important to say and I hope it never changes, that the Sedgwick County South Central delegation is really incredible to work with and works well together. And I think a lot of our strength is in the dedication of those men and women to the needs that we have as a region and their commitment to moving those forward. So for the men and women serving, who may or may not be listening, but, but I do want to give a shout-out to them because they are important to the work that we're doing and they've been strong supporters of the effort. And I will, will say there was a new member this session who did a phenomenal job and has refiled in a, in a different seat, but we hope to continue to serve with her and the other men and women as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. We appreciate it. Jason, you want to say anything this morning?
Appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Well, thank you. Tanya, do you have anything else on this portion of the agenda?
No, sir. That's all we have this morning.
Sounds good. I move that we receive and file. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Hi. Next item, please.
Item J, discussion of the federal legislative platform.
Well, welcome back.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. So now we will transition to our federal legislative platform. As you're aware, we've talked about this a couple of times in our commission staff meeting. We have worked with our staff on this and our federal lobbyist, Jim Davenport with Thorn Run Partners, who is out of Washington, DC. So what I thought I would do is just on a high level, talk about our federal legislative platform, and then if you want to get into any details, I'll certainly stop and, and talk about the details on this. So I think you all have a copy in front of you, so I'll go over this. Okay, so first item is our congressionally-directed spending requests. So we have four projects here. spending requests. So we have four projects here that are congressionally-directed spending requests from Senator Jerry Moran as part of the fiscal year 2023 congressional appropriations process. Three of these are county bridge and road projects, and so let me talk about those three. That is a bridge replacement on 151st Street West over the Nineska River, reconstruction of 151st Street West between 53rd Street North and Highway K-96, and reconstruction of the south half mile of 135th Street West between 53rd and 61st Street North. And then our fourth project, then, is to support funding for the county's Public Safety Preparedness Warehouse and Emergency Operations Center. Any comments or questions on those four?
I don't see any.
Okay. Let me move on, then. The next item is our Northwest Wichita Expressway. That is to support funding for the Northwest Wichita Expressway. And I think we had a change there to the name on that, but other than that, that's all I have on that item.
Very good. We've talked about this a number of times. I don't see any questions.
Okay. Next item we have, then, is the Amtrak Extension. That is to support the extension of Amtrak service from Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, into Newton, Kansas.
And this is mainly a state issue at this point, but we do have federal funding that is going to make this a reality if the state does their route study. Commissioner Meitzner?
Yeah, and I'm pleased to know that now Texas is getting active in supporting this, which is critical, because it starts in Fort Worth. That's the connecting point, anyway, to other, that's the connection into other routes in Texas. And so, and the fact that they're now being very active is very helpful as well. So now we've got Texas, Oklahoma, and Kansas on the same page. Good stuff.
Okay. The next item, then, is Dry Creek Overflow Detention Facility, and that is to support funding for the Dry Creek Overflow Detention Project through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, of course FEMA, Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant, BRIC. The county has supported a joint application with the City of Wichita for BRIC funding.
Well, thank you. I've been working this for over 20 years. I'm glad that there's a possibility that we'll resolve it.
Okay. Next item, then, is the Health and Social Services Legislative, excuse me, Legislation. That is to support the county's health and social services needs, including legislation that addresses mental health access, that provides for coverage of marriage and family therapist services and mental health counselor services under Medicaid, excuse me, Medicare, and two, authorizes marriage and family therapist and mental health counselors to develop discharge plans for post-hospital services. Two, assistance to state and local governments for maximum efficiency of resources. Three, legislation to stop, to end surprise medical billing. And that is it for health and social services legislation.
We've been briefed on this. Thank you.
And then the last piece is funding for county services, fiscal year 2023 federal appropriations. Support of federal programs in fiscal year 2023 appropriations legislation that enhance county services, provide formula funding, and fund competitive federal grants, such as, and there are about 50 federal grants listed here, and they're under agriculture, commerce, justice, and science, interior and environment, homeland security, labor, health, and human services, and education, and transportation, and housing, and urban development, as well as infrastructure legislation. And that concludes the federal legislative platform.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On this, the last set that required, that's requesting funding, do we know how many of these items are new versus continuations of existing grants?
I don't, this carried over from the last legislature, or the last federal legislative platform, if that's what you're asking.
I'm not an expert on most of these things, and so I guess it'd be nice to know, are we asking for more spending at the federal level? Are we asking for continuation of things we already receive and provide services to our community through some of these existing grants? I'd like to know the difference. If there's a way to break this down and find out, are we, are we at, in any place on this list, there's a lot of items on this list?
That's correct.
Are we asking for new programs, new spending grants that we've never had before? I'd like to know if there's anything on this list that's like that. If there is, I guess I'd like to have that highlighted for us.
Okay.
Maybe not today, but I guess we're going to adopt this now, but.
Sure.
I should have asked the question before today, I suppose, but.
Let me reach out to Jim and find that out.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I'll support passing this today. One thing that has hit me, and it should have hit me a long time ago, was that under agriculture, we probably ought to talk to the Farm Bureau before that we take a look at our agriculture portion of our federal agenda, to see if there's anything that our Farm Bureau would like us to support at the federal level, because a large portion of Sedgwick County is agriculture. So I want to make sure that we don't forget that portion. So next year, can we contact them before that we move forward with this?
Absolutely.
Good. I don't see any other questions. I move that we adopt the federal legislative platform. We have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, please.
Item K, Adoption of the Sedgwick County Sanitary Code.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Chris Labrum, M A B C D. Both of the codes, excuse me, that we are going to present this morning were developed in, or developed by Tim Wagner, who's also here to assist with any questions that you or the public may have, as well as his wastewater advisory board and representatives from the Wichita Area Builders Association Codes Committee. The first is the sanitary code. This code is an enabling code that, so covers basic sanitary requirements in the county, and then also enables us to have our water well and wastewater codes in place. So this is a public hearing to adopt the revised code. It's Chapter 14, Article 5 of our county code, last revised in 2007. It covers unincorporated county only. This is also overseen, so reviewed and approved by K D H E, and we have followed all of those review and publishing requirements, which also means you've seen this code several times to this point, even one extra because of our publishing mistake the last go around. In the sanitary code specifically, it addresses licensing and permit requirements, includes our overall minimum standards and enforcement as stated. The changes to this code are all administrative in nature, so changes are managing agency to ensure that M A B C D is noted throughout versus code enforcement or other agencies prior to the creation of M A B C D. There is, there are several areas of clarifying language based on questions or areas that we saw through the last cycle that Tim and his staff saw were potentially open for interpretation. And so they and the board members closed those gaps, and then ensured that all of our definitions are updated to meet the national standards that apply, national standards and those recognized that apply to these codes. So with that, staff recommends that the V O C C open the public hearing, accept any public comment, close that hearing, and then adopt the resolution. And as a reminder, this will include returning the revised code to K D H E for their official stamp of approval.
Well, thank you, Chris. I appreciate that information. We've all been briefed on this in the past. At this time, we'd like to open a public hearing to receive public comments. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I close the public comment. I move that we approve the resolution. We have a motion of a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item L, Adoption of the Sedgwick County Wastewater Code.
Well, welcome back, Chris.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, Chris Labrum, again, M A B C D for the record. Also, just as with the last code, wastewater code, in conjunction with that, developed by Mr. Wagner and his staff, the Wastewater Advisory Board, and W A B R representatives. This also follows the same line as the last code. This is Chapter 23, Article 5 of our Sedgwick Code, and then again, all the K D H E requirements still apply. As with the last, as with sanitary code, main changes, or major changes here involved reference being updated to M A B C D, that same clarifying language and definition work. Also, a bigger change with this code was to align our license renewal process with the other trades. So this puts our continuing education and that renewal cycle in line with electrical plumbing and mechanical, who also require those items. And then, one update that Tim made to this is that our licensed maintenance providers are responsible for service reports and contracts for services. So previously, the code held the property owner responsible for this. So, for example, we may say that we had not received paperwork for service of an advanced wastewater system. Property owner reports that the contractor performed it, but hasn't provided them the needed paperwork. We didn't have an avenue to really cite a violation or anything on that contractor if they continued to fail to provide that. So this is now included, and we have that. And then, another change, as per request from the community, and Commissioner Howell as well, who did a lot of work on this personally, involves wastewater stabilization ponds or lagoons. This still maintains all of our minimum separation from other water sources and setbacks from property lines or buildings, but it does allow that a single-family lagoon can be placed on any lots that are three acres or larger. Previously, that was five acres or larger. Smaller lots, as part of this, may also apply for variance, in which case they could potentially use a lagoon. They would have to be able to maintain setback requirements. And then, the code does stipulate that there may be some other requirements put in place on those, such as screening, or other items to ensure they're protected, again, from neighbors or other sources. And then, we want to emphasize there that a lot of the platted lots, especially in those smaller sizes, would prohibit lagoons by covenant. So if that's the case, we would not allow a variance with those. You would have to change the plat in order to apply for something like that. So with that, is also recommended that the V O C C open the public hearing, accept any comment, close that hearing, and adopt the resolution. And then again, we would also, we'll also send this forward to K D H E for their final approval. And obviously, Mr. Wagner and I will also stand for any questions you would have with all of this.
Well, thank you. Again, Commissioners are familiar with this code. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and receive public comment. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'd like to close the public comment. And Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. Regarding repairs to existing systems that are out there, we don't require them to bring it up to a current standard unless it's, there's a threshold of reconstruction, I guess, that might trigger that. Can you explain that a little bit?
That's correct. I'm actually going to have Mr. Wagner come up here to make sure he gives you the proper details, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Tim Wagner with M A B C D. Are you referencing the lagoon reconstruction?
Yeah.
It's a pretty fine line to get into that. Maintenance, there's a difference between maintenance and reconstruction. We've put a definition in place to try to remedy that situation where there is some confusion. So I imagine there's still going to be some confusion on what is considered maintenance versus reconstruction.
So I had a constituent at one point that had, they wanted to, I guess, take out some of the, some of the material that was in the lagoon. I don't know how to describe that, I guess. But there was a requirement at that time that they actually enlarged the entire lagoon to a much larger site. And then that became fairly contentious for that particular family, so.
Correct.
Would that happen, how would that happen today?
If they're going to remove the material, they're basically reconstructing the lagoon. I mean, it's still contentious when you remove material, depending on what the material is. I mean, it's, you're basically reconstructing that lagoon to like new lagoon. You can't remove it without destroying it otherwise.
So just, so everyone understands, I think a long time ago, I don't know what year this changed, but any new lagoon system requires a holding tank or subject tanks from the, between the home and the actual evaporation area. I don't know what you call that part. But so, the issues of odor, for example, are different today than they would have been many years ago, because they're really just evaporating liquids, so to speak. Am I describing that correctly?
Pretty much. Yes, that's correct. You're still, you still have the potential for odor, depending on how high the water level is in that lagoon.
Okay. Well, anyway, I also want to say, it's been good working with you on these issues.
Thank you.
And I have seen some movement into a direction of, I guess, a little bit more freedom, a little bit more agreement to deregulate this just a little bit, to allow people to build things out in the unincorporated that maybe a few years ago they couldn't have done.
Right.
So this is very gracious, I think, very gracious and balanced policy today. I do appreciate you all working with us on this. And Chairman, I have no other questions. I'd like to make a motion at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Commissioner Howell?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion. We would adopt this updated Sedgwick County Sanitary, excuse me, wastewater code.
Good. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item M, Adoption of the 2022 Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Plan Update.
Good morning, Susan.
Good morning, Commissioner Susan Earland Wine with Environmental Resources. Kansas Department of Health and Environment requires us to do an annual update of our solid waste plan. This is to include changes since the last update, updated census data, or estimated census data, who's on the committee, our solid waste system, has that changed, or is it the same, and updated data. I'll be presenting all of this to you today. Currently, we have 12 businesses licensed to collect solid waste from the residents in Sedgwick County. Municipal solid waste generated in 2021 was over 403,000 tons. This is a slight increase, 0.5% since 2020. Looking at the population base, that means we're producing 4.22 pounds per person per day, and that's actually 0.2 pounds less than the national average. Looking at five-year trend, you can see that our waste disposal going to the landfill in Harper County has been increasing. Part of that is the 2019 and 2020, even though businesses may have been shut down for COVID, residents were home cleaning out. And when we talked to the disposal facilities, they said a large increase of residents bringing material was seen during that time period. So how do we reduce some of this waste from going there? There are recycling facilities. There's curbside recycling. Over 49,000 tons was recycled last year, which is an 8.2% increase from 2020. It's still lower than what we were doing in 2017, 18, but we're starting to go back up again. So we are hopefully going back to recycling more. There's drop-off locations at International Paper and Pro Kansas Miller Recycling, where people can take the material there instead of paying for curbside recycling. Composting, there's Brooks C and D, that's a construction and demolition landfill, has a compost area, and Evergreen Recycling has one up on 53rd Street North. They received over 14,400 tons of material at those two locations to compost. Some small cities also offer this to the residents, that they can bring material, have it composted, and pick up the mulch. There are two private companies also that collect food waste curbside from their customers, and they had over, what was it, 100,000 pounds? So they're doing good. Construction and demolition saw over 164,000 tons received and buried. It's a decrease from 2020, and that's materials such as two-by-fours, concrete, bricks, roofing material, carpet, mainly inert material. roofing material, carpet, mainly inert material. And you can see in 2017 and 18, construction and demolition was low, but increased from 2019 on. Household hazardous waste, county has a facility at 801 Stillwell, where residents can bring their household hazardous waste for free drop-off. It's open Tuesday through Friday, nine to five, and Saturday, nine to three. We had over 16,000 participants last year, bringing in over a million and a half thousand pounds of materials. So quite a bit. If you can see from this five-year trend, the blue line is household hazardous waste being brought into the facility, and the red is our swap and shop customers. That became lower during the COVID period because people didn't want to get out. But you can see if you have a volume trend like that and a customer trend going down, as you see in this graph, that means each person coming in had a lot of material. And this picture shows trailer loads and truck loads full of material coming to our facility. And if you look closely at this photo, we received this just over a month ago, that's a bottle of mercury, 12 pounds of mercury in one bottle. Someone passed away, relatives were cleaning out their basement and found this. And that's not the only time this has happened to our facility where large amounts of mercury have been brought. And that shows why this facility is important, to get this out of the home, out of the environment, and taken care of properly. We also work with businesses called small quantity generators. They produce less hazardous waste than the federal or state level, so they can take advantage of our contract pricing. We just charge them what we're charged by our contractor to get rid of their material. We worked with 223 businesses last year, and they brought in over 45, 47,000 pounds of material. When material's brought in, our staff sorts it. If it's in good condition, where you can read the label, the product's good, we put it in our swap and shop area, where residents can come in and pick it up for free. We also mix latex paint into five-gallon buckets, and we sell those for $25 a bucket. And it's hard keeping those in our store because they're well-used. People call and ask all the time, do you have the paint ready yet? In this picture of the swap and shop area, we have pool chemicals, oils, antifreeze, cleaning products for the home, typical household waste that, instead of us paying for disposing of it, people pick it up for free. And last year, over 327,000 pounds were reclaimed by over 7,000 customers. And that saved us almost $78,000 last year in what it would have cost us to dispose of that material. We also work with county departments. We've received outdated medicines from different departments that we will take and get rid of. The picture on the right are kerosene cans from the COVID time, where it was bought through COVID funding, and we stored this for the health department. So we try to work with others to help them out, and even get material from our swap and shop for the fleet department. The remote collection, we have five of those every year. I ask each one of you to pick a location. So you can see, last year, we had almost 200,000 pounds delivered at our remote collection. So it was a very successful program, and I've been lining up this year's locations with all of you. Specific ways, people, even to this day, will call and ask, when's the free dump day at the landfill? There hasn't been one of those since 2001. And so, we have offered a bulky waste coupon since 2012 to residents to get this, and they can use it for free disposal at the transfer station for up to 1,000 pounds of material. So this is really geared for that material that's too large to put in your trash can. And we do have people call and request it. Last year, we issued over 88,000, I mean, 8,800, excuse me, coupons. Unfortunately, only 24% were redeemed. So we're trying to work on a system where we get better usage. I'm afraid people see something for free, get it, and then don't use it. We also work with Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department and the Aging Department. When they have severe cases of a lot of trash in the house or around it, the people can't afford to pay for disposal, but they're willing to clean it up and to avoid fines. My department provides the dumpsters. We worked with 88 properties in 2021 for dumpsters, and another 47 where it wasn't that bad, and we gave them a coupon to get into the transfer station, and we get the bill. So you can see a before and after picture on the bottom, where what was cleaned up is gone. And it's a pretty successful program in working with M A B C D and aging on this. And some of them are actually hoarding cases where it may take three or four or more dumpsters to clean up the problem. We also work with townships on illegal dumping along their roads. Since we started this in 2002, we have paid for over 2 million pounds of illegally dumped material that's gone to the disposal facilities, just over 41,000 pounds last year. So the township provides the labor, and we provide the disposal fees. And storm debris, we have a tub grinder and air curtain burner that we use to help with storms. We have taken the tub grinder out to small cities to grind after a windstorm or ice storm, leave the mulch material for the citizens to pick up. And there's a storm contingency fund in the solid waste fee of $250,000. Most recently, you're all familiar with the Andel tornado. This shows a path through Cedric County with that black line on the right being the Cedric County-Butler County border. The white dots you see are structures that had either been destroyed or severe damage. And as you know, Public Works, emergency management, animal control, whole bunch of groups have been out there trying to help the citizens in this area. The citizens have brought material to the curbside for collection. We, through the solid waste fee, have provided dumpsters at these locations and rotated them in and out as they fill up. Public Works staff out there and the township, some township staff, call in and say the dumpster's full, pick it up, bring another one. So we've been working with Waste Connections on this, getting the dumpsters rotated. And you can imagine dumpsters are in high demand right now in Cedric County and Butler County. So it's been a slow process, but my understanding is we'll be still doing this through this week, and that may end the cleanup. You can see picture here of the debris along the road. Public Works out there collecting tree limbs and other organic debris. And my household hazardous waste staff has been out there every afternoon. They've talked to residents. If they had chemicals that they no longer want after the debris, they, we will pick it up. And also, we are offering in the future, once they get back into business, so to speak, get a home, they could come down to the swap and shop and get as much material as they can without limit. We have a Christmas tree program that we do every year at 22 sites for drop-off of the Christmas trees. Over 2,800 trees were chipped last year, over 102,000 since 2002. And the number of Christmas trees being dropped off at these locations has gone down. This map shows the locations around the county. Mark Schroff with the County Parks Department has a small chipper that goes out and does this for us. The mulch is then left for the citizens to pick up. We talked to the solid waste committee about should we reduce the number of sites that we service, or how can we handle the decreasing amount. And the decreasing amount of trees is for several reasons. This past year is the supply chain. Prior to that was the people who buy Christmas trees and sell them, put a whole bunch out for sale. A lot were left over at the end, and they brought it to these locations. So we had an influx of material at the end of the season. And also, more people are going to artificial trees. So the committee recommended that we keep these tree locations at least for one more year. But locations that have less than a certain number to be determined by us and the Parks Department will only be mulched at the very end of the season. They won't be going out every few days or once a week. So we're working on that and see what these new numbers hold, then that may reduce sites in the future. We held an electronics waste event this past April. We had it at the West Yard, and really appreciate the workers there and their help. We had over 2,400 vehicles attend this year. We don't have the final pounds yet on what was collected, but I can tell you, I was out there every day, and the number of large TVs has diminished a lot. The large monitors have diminished. So our estimated amount right now is 234,600 pounds for this year. That may change. But you can see, overall, we've collected over 2,400,000 pounds of electronics from four events. So we're getting them out and disposed of properly and recycled. The company we contract with is a zero-waste company. All of the material is recycled in North America. Nothing goes overseas. And we constantly have calls from people saying, when's your next event? People spend a lot of money on electronics. They realize there are harmful chemicals in them, as well as beneficial, that they're worth something, and they just don't like the idea of throwing them away. Plus, we guarantee that all of the hard drives are destroyed. We also have to report on medical waste. A company named Stericycle services the medical waste, whether it's a hospital, doctor's office, vet clinic. They have contracts to pick that up. And we also, the county works with the DEA programs when they have events in Cedric County. I know the zoo has a site, and so does the household hazardous waste facility. Some pharmacies also will take back medicines that are not used. And the county has MedSafe boxes at five police stations around the county, and we're looking to add more. And this has to be at a police station because these will be, take controlled substances. No questions asked. The people just go in, drop it, looks like a mailbox, and it's out of everybody's hands. And then, we send it back to MedSafe. MedSafe pays for the shipping. We try to educate the public on what's available through brochures and our websites. And we go out and give talks, trade shows, presentations, our online recycling guide, what you see here. I'm on the Kansas chapter of the Solid Waste Association of North America. I'm a board member, and I work on conferences and getting those out there to help the people in the industry. So we're working on all sides of this, trying to improve the environment. Kansas Department of Health and Environment requires that any permits or grants that go to them must be first approved locally that is in conformance with our solid waste plan. There were no solid waste permits in '21. When I prepared the plan and this presentation, there were three grant applications. One, Cedric County Park, applied for and received a waste tire grant for the boundless playground at Cedric County Park. Nudge Compost applied for two grants and equipment. And just this past weekend, I had two more grants come forth from Evergreen Recycling up on 53rd, where they want to start receiving construction and demolition material for recycling, sorting and recycling. So they call that their large grant that would cost, have a lot of equipment. And they also want an education program. So the committee reviews the grants. That does not have to come in front of the board, but any permits would come in front of the board. So the committee's reviewing those final two grant applications this week. And the solid waste fee pays for all of this. It's on the county property taxes. And a year ago, you voted to keep it the same, and the rate was $7.80 per residential property. And non-residential range from just over $5 to just over $10 per year. There'll be more on this on the presentation after mine. And so this gives you an idea of the projects we do. Next year, we're planning on a waste tire event. We have the e-waste event this year. We do the special cleanups, bulky waste, respond to storm debris, and other issues as they arrive. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also would recommend you approve the plan update to be sent to the state with some changes between now and when I send it to the state in June. Those changes would be seeing whatever you do with the solid waste fee after this. I'd like to put in the amount of material we collected through the dumpsters on the storm debris. And I need to, excuse me, put in the final e-waste pounds that we received. So with those three additions, just updating it between now and when I send it to the state. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Any questions? Seeing no questions, I move that we approve the annual update for submission to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. We have a motion on the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meister,
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz,
Aye.
Commissioner Howell,
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez,
Chairman Dennis.
Next item, please.
Item M, adoption of a resolution establishing solid waste fees for 2023.
Good morning, Carly.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Carly Sanchez, Principal Management Analyst with the Budget Office. Since 2000, Cedric County has imposed solid waste fees, would provide partial funding for the programs Susan Erlandwine just described for you. State law provides that if the county chooses to impose a solid waste fee, it must do so before July 1st for the fee to be effective for the following calendar year. The action before you today is to impose a solid waste fee for 2023. The fee varies according to classifications. Residential property owners pay a fixed amount per dwelling unit, and commercial and industrial property owners pay an amount based on their waste generation characteristics for their particular business or parcels of property. The resolution proposed for 2023 suggested a range of fees that are an average increase of 36 cents across all tiers over 2022 fees. The residential fee increases from $7.90 to $8.38. Tier one increases from $5.13 to $5.33. Tier two increases from $6.81 to $7.11. Tier three increases from $8.49 to $8.89. Tier four increases from $10.17 to $10.67. And then, tier five, which are large multi-use properties such as malls, increase from $6.81 to $7.11, times the number of business units within that parcel of property. Those fees will be collected through the county's property tax bills. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. If not, then I recommend that you adopt the resolution that is before you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Carly? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question. So we are increasing, the proposal is to increase fees a little bit. Do you know how much money this is expected to generate in terms of overall?
We anticipate that this will bring in 1.9 million in revenue.
And what was it, this last year with the lower, was it $7.80?
The revenue that we anticipated for last year?
Yes.
I believe, I don't have that in front of me, but I believe it's about 1.8 million.
So it's a $100,000 increase?
I believe so.
And do you know what we plan to do with an extra $100,000 this year?
Well, the reasons that we are proposing a rate increase is to maintain current service levels for household hazardous waste and environmental resources, to allow for all the planned programs that Susan has. And then, this will also allow us to maintain appropriate fund balance in the solid waste fund.
So I, generally speaking, I like most of the stuff that we're doing with this program. I think that community cleanups are needed sometimes. I don't like it to be abused by situations where we encourage people to essentially wait for that opportunity. If they have personal responsibility options, I like to see people do this, you know, on their own as much as possible. But sometimes, community cleanups, like the Andover tornado is a great example. We took a number of dumpsters out there and helped clean up that community. It just had to be done. And, you know, I want to say thank you to Jim Weber and his Public Works folks for doing a lot of that work. But those dumpsters, I'm sure, came from this fee, I assume. Is that reasonable? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. That's correct. So there are times where I think that's very necessary. I think the household hazardous waste opportunity for this, for this community that is year-round is a great, tremendous opportunity for the community overall, and I think that's fantastic. I'm a little bit concerned about some of these programs, the tire roundup and the electronics waste roundup event where we collect that, and anything like that. I think that there are a number of people who are taking, taking the I think that there are a number of people who are taking, are taking advantage of these opportunities, are very few, few residents overall are exercising the option to engage those opportunities. And so what we, you know, one thing about taxation, people say, this is a fee. Well, you're right, it's a fee, but in this regard, it's paying for a service and there is redistribution, so to speak. Some people pay it and never use it. Some people benefit from this and maybe, maybe to a very, to a greater, greater sense they get something of great value and pay very little for that service. And so in a sense, there's redistribution of who's paying for this versus who gets to use it. In that, in that regard, I have some concerns about some of these special events. And I've, I've shared that in the past. I would like to see us maybe reduce that or lessen the frequency of those. I think there's been a lot of abuse in that area. And I think that if we can, if we could re-envision how to spend this money and make a year-round service, I would be much more in favor of this. When I first became a commissioner, this was, this was $4.88 a year for residential property. And every single parcel that's residential was $4.88. And now we're getting up to $8.38. That's a 71.7% increase. And just this year alone, we're talking about a 7.4% increase. To me, I am having trouble with that. If you think about a mill levy equivalent, on a $100,000 home, this is a, that was proposed today is a .72 mil property tax essentially, if it was on a $100,000 homes, .72, up from .67. So it's a, it's a fee increase of, of about .05 mils to provide the same level of services. And so I'm not in favor of this increase and I would probably oppose, oppose this. I would like to make a motion, we would, we would hold steady at the $7.80 per, I should say, I'd like to maintain last year's rates on all of these items. And that would be my motion this morning. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Well, Carly, I appreciate the update. I know that I've expressed my concerns about the tire roundup in the past on getting it from a lot of people that are charging for changing tires and then taking them over to our department and dropping them off for free, going and buying junk cars that they're salvaging and ripping the wheels off of them and, and then taking those over after they've made a profit on the vehicle and charging the county to get rid of them, basically. So I think we need to review how that our tire management goes. But beyond that, I think that these are important for our environment and that's why that we need to keep them. But if, if we take a look at some of the things to mitigate large producers bringing items in that they, they probably have already received money to get rid of and then us disposing of them, maybe in the future, we can then review this fee and see if we could keep it where it was last year. But for now, I don't know if I'd support the motion, but I'll allow Commissioner Howell to make the motion if he wishes to.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if there'll be a second or not, but again, I, I'm not saying I don't support these programs. I think last year, we did a lot. And we're talking a $100,000 difference. And I am concerned about some of the abuse that's happening right now. I think without question, there is, there are some issues with what we're doing and I, I think we could stay to last year's numbers and let's do some work to, to clean this up a little bit. At the end of the day, I think we, again, I think we should review what we provide and how often we provide it. I think right now, we're doing a tire roundup every other year, it seems like, and the electronics waste is much more often now than we have in the past. And so I don't think we're, I don't think we're disservicing the public by keeping this to last year's numbers. And so, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we do not adopt the proposed fee increases, but we would adopt the same fee schedule that we had for 2022 or the previous, previous year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. And I do understand why you made the motion. I think that we can take a look at management on how that we manage these different things and hopefully in the future, reduce them. So I just want to let you know why that I wouldn't second that right now, but I do understand what you're saying and I, and I listen to you. So is there a motion or is there a second to that motion before we go into discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. When it comes to the ability for folks to clean up properties, I'm, I am supportive of our bulky waste coupon. Susan, you and I had a conversation around utilization of that coupon or underutilization of that coupon and figuring out a way, perhaps we could move it to an electronic version. That way, we know how many people are using them. It's one thing for someone to get the coupon, but then not to have the ability to, like say, a truck. Not everybody has the ability to or has access to a truck to fill it up, to dispose and utilize that bulky waste coupon. So, you know, we've had a lot of conversations. I just went to the District One Breakfast in Wichita with Councilmember Johnson and we talked about a lot of illegal dumping, dumping happening. And so to encourage folks to be able to use the bulky waste coupon, but they have to have access to a vehicle or something to get it to the, the dump. So those are some of the programs I think that we could utilize the additional revenue for, in addition to many other things, I'm sure. But, because it's, we have to keep our community clean and not everybody has access to being able to pay the fee at the dump. They don't have access to these things and these programs allow them to get rid of things in the proper way instead of just putting them in their trash can. So I, I appreciate this service and I think it's vital to the health and wellness of our environment and educating folks around proper disposal of these particular items that we service as our Environmental Resources Department. So, thank you.
Thank you. What do these things cost? Susan, I should have asked you earlier, what did it cost to get rid of that mercury? Because that is pretty dangerous. Having that one bottle of mercury surely costs us quite a bit.
That's around $400.
$400 for a little bottle of mercury. So this is what we're using these fees for.
Right.
All right. Thank you for that information.
And just for your information, our contract cost for HHW keeps going up. Right now, it's increased 38% from last year.
Yeah. I too hate to see increases, but this keeps our environment safe, so I do support it. So I make the motion that we adopt the solid waste fee for 2023. We have a motion on the second. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to explain my vote before, before we do vote. Again, I appreciate the discussion. I, I would, I would like to see us move away from these, these one or two-day event type of opportunities and move to something that's more year-round. I've talked about tree limb disposal being year-round for the entire county. I mean, I live in the city of Derby and they have one. It's fantastic if you live in Derby, but we pay a little, little fee through the city and only if you live in the city can you use that. It's actually in the slides this morning. We saw a slide regarding that, but if you live outside the city of Derby, you, you're not allowed to drop off your limbs there. But that's something that I think people, they end up putting those limbs in the, in their dumpsters and they end up in the landfill. And we are, we are filling up our landfill more quickly than necessary. Those are the types of programs I think that, that we ought to try to develop. And we talked about mattresses. I don't know about y'all, but I'm, I'm driving around and I see mattresses everywhere because the cost of disposal of one mattress. I know there is one place you can get for $10, but most places are charging much higher than that to dispose of a mattress. And so I thought we have to develop some type of a program to get rid of bulky furniture, things like, you know, large pieces of furniture, including mattresses. And I think that's a great goal as to develop this, this type of service year-round. But right now, we don't have a vision for that. I also talked about potentially allowing people to donate. Very, people are very generous. If you, they really believe in this, and I think they do. I think many of us believe in, you know, not putting things in the landfill that could be recycled. And so, you know, if you really appreciate that service, allowing for donations would probably offset many of these programs we provide. You know, I just was doing some of the math here. The average, average vehicle dropped off nearly 100 pounds of household hazardous waste at those five events we did last year and all that goes. And so the average vehicle dropped off nearly 100 tires or whatever it was. I forget exactly the number now. But if you open, open that up to say, if you want to provide a donation for these, you know, for this value, for the, for the value of the service, we would certainly be glad to take that. I think we have to develop a donation program. So if people want to donate, they can do that. And we, this is a solvable problem. The only reason we haven't done it is because it's, it's difficult to get there. But these are good ideas. And so at the end of the day, I don't like the idea that this has just gone up and up and up. Every year I've been here, it's gone up and up. In fact, I've been, I've been attacked politically for supporting these, these fee increases. And I don't plan on just doing this without some type of a more robust discussion. So, Mr. Chairman, I am going to vote no this morning. I do support the programs generally, especially the, the Household Hazardous Waste Center. I think that's tremendous and things more like that I would be glad to support. But I think overall, there's, there's issues with this proposal this year. I need to, I need to vote no today. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I appreciate your comments and I understand them. Hopefully, as we look at our, our solid waste plan for next year, as we're moving forward, we might take a look at some of the things that were discussed today and see if we can incorporate those into the plan. So I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. Next item, please.
Item O, presentation of the quarterly financial report.
Brent, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Dennis, members of the County Commission. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO. 2022 has turned out to be quite a year of transition. After spending nearly two years with a pretty intense focus on responding to the pandemic, we're beginning to return to some more normal activities. We're seeing it in our personal lives as well. And yet, at the same time, we're experiencing historic inflation at 40-year highs, rising interest rates after three years of pretty level interest rate. Hearing about supply chain disruptions and workforce challenges. But I would submit to you today that as we move forward to embrace the challenges and opportunities, we're doing so from a sound financial position organizationally. But also tell you that we're doing it with a team of dedicated professionals. I want to give a special thanks this morning to the accounting and, and budget professionals that have put together this quarterly financial report for you. Just a quick reminder that the information is based on unaudited financial statements, subject to change as that audit occurs. Would stay at a high level. I recommend or encourage questions. You've been given the report and it'll be made available on the county's website later As we typically do when we begin the quarterly financial report, we look at the six operating funds that are across the county and look at the change in cash position between the beginning and the end of the year. If you look in the middle row, you'll see on the far right-hand column that we're looking at about a $3.4 million reduction in cash fund balance at the end of 2022 versus the beginning of the year. Breaking it down a little bit individually by the funds, the general fund, we're anticipating about an $8 million reduction, primarily a result of that additional pay period that will occur in 2022 that doesn't occur in other years. A little bit less payments in debt service will contribute to about a $990,000 increase in the fund balance and bond and interest. Our other property tax-supported funds are seeing some additional revenue growth, holding the line or even reducing expenses, and that should contribute to about a $1.6 million increase in fund balance. The non-property tax-supported funds are the areas in which the federal stimulus money will be deposited. We're anticipating almost $3 million additional fund balance there. Pretty flat in the fire district. And some of the pressure that we have mentioned before on risk management costs, insurance renewals and so forth, we're looking at about a $1 million reduction in fund balance in our enterprise and internal service funds. As you are aware, in 2022, we consolidated three funds into the county property, or into the general fund, EMS, com care and noxious weed. So now the county property tax-supported funds exist, consist of the general fund, bond and interest, aging, WSU and highways. As we look at the revenues for those funds that are supported primarily with property tax dollars, we see nice, steady increases in revenue year over year. Some reduction in expenditures with an increase in 2021. And if we remove the COVID expenditures from those total expenditures, we see basically about a $300,000 increase. We had some expenses at the first quarter of '21 that were COVID-related that didn't occur in 2022. To give you some more detail about these, the revenues in these funds, as mentioned before, property tax is the primary funding source, but on row two, you'll see sales and use taxes up for the first quarter of this year versus last year by $1.3 million or 16.7%. We are seeing more economic activity. People are buying, that's fueling inflation, but people continue to purchase. These revenues for sales tax would reflect, they're running two months in arrears, so this is picking up the holiday season spending. This isn't a big driver in terms, well, I'm, I'm sorry. If we couple some of the, a couple of fees here, insurance fees, Medicare fees and some other things that don't show up on the chart, it's contributing to an increase in the revenues in EMS. We saw lower call volume that moved us into 2021's first quarter. That was increased and so the revenues in EMS have gone up for the first quarter of '22 versus last year. Our miscellaneous non-business license and permits ups about 6.8%, indicating continued activity at MABCD. And one thing, although it's not a huge dollar amount, officers' fees are something that we pay attention to. Those are those per-page filing fees that are done in the Register of Deeds office for document filing. In the first quarter of the year compared to the first quarter of last year, we saw about a 14% or $200,000 decrease in those funds. That's still up over the first quarter of 2020 by about 30%. But I think interest rates going up have eased some of the refinancing activity. We're still seeing a lot of real estate purchase activity, but I think we're starting to see maybe some things that are being affected by, by the rising interest rates. Personnel expenditures are the top expense in these property tax-supported funds. And I think what this chart indicates at a .1% decrease year over year is the result of a lot of vacancies across the organization. Salaries and wages basically flat. And then you look at decreases in the employer portion of insurance premiums, pension contributions with continued increases in overtime activity. The other thing that money is spent on or outside of the non-personnel expenditures, the top line here are grant awards with a $2 million reduction. In 2021, the county made the third $2 million payment for the award of $6 million that was given to the zoo for the entrance for the administration building and the other activities that have been going on there. So that would account for that reduction. Been a lot more activity in the first quarter of this year versus last in terms of software and hardware maintenance, some of the TRB projects, the new financial system and so forth are seeing expenditures there. And on the bottom line, temporary employment services, we've seen a big reduction in these funds for the temporary services that were booked in the first quarter of '21 versus first quarter of this year. Moving to the fire district, we see flat revenues, almost flat expenses, slight uptick year over year for the first quarter. Some detail here shows pretty much status quo year over year. The 4% raise that was provided to the fire district is de- The 4% raise that was provided to the Fire District is depicted here in the chart with some increased salary and wage and pension contributions. Shifting the focus now to the property tax funds that are not supported, non-property tax-supported funds across the county. We see small reduction in the revenues in these funds year over year. Small reduction, a little larger reduction in those revenues without COVID revenues being included in those. The driving force behind this decrease is a result of the loss of the child support contract through Department of Children and Families, so those reduced revenues are being depicted here. Expenditures on a budgetary basis in these funds were showing about a $4 million decrease year over year. This includes COVID expenditures. There were some grant closeouts with CARES the first quarter of last year that didn't occur this year. And then without them, we're seeing a little bit more of a level decrease. This is picking up the decrease in expenditures for administering the program for child support. So that's shown up here. A little bit more detail about the revenues in these funds. You'll see that overall, the revenues are at about a 1.7% decrease, so it's remaining fairly constant. There are some big swings that you'll see in state revenue with K-Dads, some of the other areas. A lot of these are a result of timing in terms of when payments have been received. So, over the course of the year, these things probably are going to level out. The one thing that does affect cash that I would point out to you is the federal revenue miscellaneous line, about midway down in the chart. This increase is due to the grant that was received for com cares ICT One program. It was received in February of 2021, but, or awarded in February 2021. There were no payments in the first quarter of last year, but that $4 million, two-year grant is beginning to show up now in the first quarter of 2022. On the expenditure side, the top two lines in terms of salaries and wages and temporary employment services are as a result of continued efforts. COVID response, some additional positions in temporary services. Financial professional services on the third line from the bottom represent fees that are being paid to our consultants so that we can assure that we get good guidance with eligibility of expenditures, federal compliance with the grant, reporting, and so forth. This chart and the next chart are depictions of the fund balance at the end of the quarter. It's an erratic-looking chart, but it's really pretty steady in that it shows, depicts the property tax collection and the expenditure cycle where we collect in the first two quarters of the year about 95% of the property taxes that we get over the year, but they're spent down as we go through the course of the year. County policy indicates it will maintain a balance of at least 20% of our budget and expenditures, and we have stayed in compliance with policy for many years. Onto our investment portfolio. And what we've seen is, as we mentioned earlier, rising interest rates. You can see on this chart that of the $350 million roughly that we have invested, which compares to about 330 same time last year. We've got a .25, a .26% return, which is up from .19% at the end of the year, but it's relatively flat year over year. It was .28% last year. Our benchmark yield right now has jumped to 1.57%. That's the Treasury Bill yield, average yield at the end of the quarter. So we're taking a hard look at the investment policy. And in order of importance in the county's investment policy are safety, liquidity, and yield. Everything is governed by statute. We have to be in government-backed securities or collateralized CDs, so we're in very safe investments. Liquidity is something that we try to pace out the maturities of the investments so that we don't have to sell any early and take a reduction in the par value of the investment. But catching up with the yield curve is going to take some time as we look at the maturities on our securities. Last week, we invested $20 million at 3.39%. So the rates are there. It's just going to take us a while to turn the ship around and get caught back up with Taking a look at some of the significant capital projects that have either, are about to start or are beginning to start during the first quarter of the year, the household hazardous waste facility expansion, the construction documents are currently in process on that 6,000-square-foot addition to the facility at 801 Stillwell. That's going to provide some additional administrative space, some additional storage and loading space to be used for their events. Part of the facility will be revamped to increase some of the safety measures for staff, increases the separation between some of that chemical storage and members of the public that utilize that facility. That's expected to be completed in July of next year. Some roof replacement pursuant to the replacement plan are underway. The first one is at the Regional Forensic Science Center. That was replaced with a new roof during the first quarter of the year. Some parking lot resurfacing has been occurring. EMS post-six parking lot was replaced to give it some ADA compliance than it did not have prior. And finally, the beginning stages of construction for R359, which is 95th Street South and for a half a mile east of 135th Street West, right at the north side of Clearwater. This is going to have a big benefit for the Cotton Cooperative Association's truck traffic as twice a year when you have a cotton harvest, trucks are coming and going. This is going to support those efforts and help with that. So I guess things to leave you with in terms of key points, we continue to have modest tax-based growth. We are maintaining healthy fund balances. Our revenue growth has continued to increase. I think the gas pedal may be coming off the real estate, foot off the gas pedal, the real estate market a bit, but it's still a very strong market, maybe just not quite as hot as it was for part of last year. Things that we're looking out for, we've mentioned it before, it's a hard insurance market. It continues to get harder, anticipating 25% to 30% premium renewal costs, increases in those premiums. We're seeing local employment growth, but that's being hampered with workforce shortages, a lot of efforts underway to get people in the workforce. We're looking at, as there are with a number of other departments across the county, at the federal stimulus funding opportunities that are out there. Rising interest rates are going to be challenging for us. Inflation's going to be challenging, and we continue to monitor the legislative action that's occurring that can affect the county's fiscal status. At this point, I will answer any questions that you have, and then would recommend that you receive and file the report.
Well, thank you, Brent. Appreciate it. On your last slide, I'd have probably put inflation and workforce shortages at the top, underlined it and highlighted it. Those were probably two of the biggest issues that we're facing right now.
Duly noted.
But I don't see any questions at all right now. Move to receive and file. We have a motion and a second any discussion? Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item P, Memorandum of Agreement Between Sedgwick County, Evergy Inc., and PGR Properties LLC.
Tanya, welcome back.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I am here this morning to talk about this memorandum of agreement with PGR. But before I do, and this is relevant to this parking agreement, I would like to give a little bit of background on this agreement, and this is related to the Ruffin Building downtown that we will be occupying with a lease here in June. And so let me give a little bit of background on this when we talk about the Ruffin Building and what brought us to being at this location. And so, I think Lindsey's talked about this. I know that Judge Gearing has talked about this, as well as the DA. And what brings us to moving to this location is the need for additional judges and additional courthouse space to deal with the court backlog that occurred during COVID and, again, that court backlog. And to be able to help with that is the need for additional judges. And so, we are going to remodel the space here in the courthouse with additional courtrooms, and that will be four additional courtrooms, one being on the seventh floor, two courtrooms being on the eighth floor, and one additional courtroom being on the ninth floor. We will also remodel the 11th floor to accommodate three appellate judges on the 11th floor. Also with that, we will be remodeling the second floor to accommodate the district attorney's office, as well as the third floor in the courthouse to accommodate the district attorney's office. And this total project budget will be a little bit over $7 million to be able to accommodate the courthouse space remodel here. And so where we are at with this project right now is, we have completed the A&E award for that. That's with Schaefer, Johnson, Cox &amp; Frye. They are in the process of doing construction documents, and that should be completed no later than June of this year. And I reached out to Justin, and he feels that they should be able to complete the construction of the courthouse remodel by October of 2023 next year. And I did want to give you an update, and I think Judge Gearing also gave you this update, that they heard that they will be able to have two district court judges and one magistrate judge. And so the election for that will occur in November, and those judges will start in So, to bring this forward, talk about the Ruffin Building, and I think I gave you an update on this in February, but I just want to reiterate this again. We will be renting 43,000 square feet of the Ruffin Building. A little over 12,000 of that will be on the first floor, and that will accommodate the Register of Deeds and the County Treasurer. They will be sharing a break room, a conference room, and a single restroom in that space. And of course, there will also be restrooms on the second floor there. A little over 31,000 square feet will be on the sixth floor, and that will accommodate Finance, County Clerk, the County Manager's Office, as well as Strategic Communications, the County Counselor's Office, the Board of County Commissioners. And then also in that space, we will have a large conference room, shared break rooms, and restrooms. On the lower level, there will be an auditorium that we will have the Board of County Commissioners meeting out of that space, as well as there will be a large conference room that will be available to us as well. We will have 110 parking stalls for employees in the parking garage and 10 visitor parking stalls that will be marked in the parking garage. As well, this location is on the City Wichita Transit System. We will have 15 surface parking stalls north of the building. That's what I'm going to get into here in a little bit. And then they will open the cafeteria on the second floor, and there is a restaurant on the ninth floor. This is just a picture of the Ruffin Building. And then, just right here where my mouse is, just to the north here of this building, is the parking lot that I'll be referring to. And then here to the left or the west is the parking garage. Okay, so to discuss the parking agreement, we will have 15 reserved parking stalls. Again, that's a north lot there that will be uncovered. So currently, Evergy leases a portion of the spaces, and they will relinquish 15 spaces for use by Sedgwick County. That will go back to PGR or Ruffin. And so we will enter into a lease with, Ruffin will enter into a lease with us for these parking spaces. Those leases will be $40 per month, and that will be effective June 1 of this year. So that is a total of $600 monthly or $7,200 annually. The 15 parking spaces will be provided to eight elected officials that will be housed in the Ruffin Building and seven, or, excuse me, that is incorrect. It should be eight executive staff. So five of those staff will be on site, and then three will be off-site. And then here is just a diagram of those 15 parking stalls. As you can see in yellow, those will be the parking stalls that will be allocated to us at that north lot. The manager asked me while I'm up here to give an update kind of where we are in the process of this move. And so, what I did want to give you an update is on, are the costs, and then I'll start talking about the timeline. So, everything in red is what I'd like to give you an update on. As far as IT cabling, we've gone up a little bit there on costs. So we've gone from $75,000 to $109,337. What I didn't have on previously are network costs, and that will be our network costs over three years to have Cox in the building. So that's a cost of $188,898. Again, that's over three years. To have the architect design the construction documents for us, this is an estimate. We think it'll be a little bit more than $20,000, so we're estimating $30,000. Tenant improvements, we have gone up from $160,000 to approximately $464,587. I will mention that Ruffin is covering $100,000 of the tenant improvements there, and they are covering the lights, ceilings, and sprinklers on the first floor. I will mention that storage, I did take that number off. We feel that we will be able to cover that within our own facilities to be able to store any furniture that we have that may not be able to make it in the Ruffin Building. We have looked at the sixth-floor conference room. That is a large space. We think that we may want to hold some staff meetings in there, possibly bid board or some other informal meetings. So as of right now, we're looking at some possible AV technology in that room. We don't have costs, but we are obtaining some costs from some vendors. So as of right now, we don't have costs on that, but we are looking into that. And then, of course, the mention I just had of parking, that is over three years, $21,600. So you can see that those costs have increased from what I originally estimated to $1,212,988. Okay, want to give you an update on timelines, and again, we are talking about eight departments moving over there. So, as you can see in front of you, this is going to be pretty consecutive. So Andrew Dilson and myself, we're going to turn into project managers and move these departments over. So Finance, we have dates there of their tear down and rebuild. So officially, Finance will be over in the Ruffin Building June 10. County Clerk, we have a tear down and rebuild, so officially, County Clerk will be over in the Ruffin Building June 16. County Counselor, we have a tear down and rebuild, so officially, the County Counselor will be in the building and ready to, for business, June 23. County Manager and Strategic Communications will do a tear down and rebuild, and they will be in business June 30. And then we'll move to the County Commission. We have a tear down and rebuild, so they will be in business July 7. County Treasurer, tear down and rebuild, they will be in business July 14. And then the Register of Deeds, tear down and rebuild, they will be in business July 22. The auditorium, we have, you have approved through bid board the AV equipment, and so we're just waiting on lead times of how long that's going to take to get that ordered and in stock so that we can get them over to install that in the auditorium. And then we did here on the furniture, that will be arriving early July. So as soon as we know the lead times on when that AV equipment, we'll be able to get that auditorium set up for the County Commission meetings, and I'll get that date to you. And I'll get that date to you. And so I have some pictures just to share with you on the progress of where we're at. This is the first floor County Treasurer's Office. And so this is, this would be when you walk into the space and kind of looking to the left there. And then as you can see the desk right there, that's where the clerks will be. Again, this is the County Treasurer's space. That space to the back there will be their break room. This is the sixth floor, this is the public entrance, so this is, be right where the public could walk in. And we'll have Linda right there at the, at the front when you walk in to greet the public. So this is the sixth floor again. This would be looking down, so this would be looking to the south. The door there to the, to the left would be going down to the Manager's Office. The door to the right would be going into the Communications Office, and then that long hallway and the door you can see there would be the Commission Office, door to the Commission Office. This is again sixth floor, and this is looking down the Manager's hallway. This is sixth floor again, and this is looking into the Communications Office. This is sixth floor, so this is looking to the north. This is to the right there, you can see this is a conference room that will be able to be shared by all of the county that's, that's in the Ruffin Building. And then doorway to the left is, that will be the public entrance for the County Clerk's Office. And then this is again sixth floor, this is looking into if the public were to walk in, this would be the County Clerk's Office. And to the right there would be the, kind of the public receptionist area. And then this is sixth floor again, and this is the Finance Department. I think this is where purchasing and payroll will be housed. And so that is my update, and happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know I went over a lot as far as the parking agreement and updates and costs, so happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Tanya. First of all, thanks to you and Andrew for all the work that you've done on this. This whole move is a temporary move is what the goal is, that we can eventually, hopefully in the very near future, make a decision on where the permanent location is going to be. But again, it's temporary. We're paying for it with ARPA funding, and that's going to run out the end of 2026. So unless we want to start telling the public we're going to start using general funds to rent facilities, why, we probably ought to make a decision sooner rather than later. I know that a lot of the Commissioners have had an opportunity to go over and tour it. Last week, Mike Papuna and I went over along with Lindsey and Tanya and walked through all the facilities. They're coming along very well at this point in time, so I look forward to the move so that we can get this building modified for the courts and hopefully have a decision so that we know where we're going permanently. Recently, I had a meeting with Don Sherman from Evergy, and we were talking about parking and so forth. One of the things that I heard at one of the other earlier meetings on this discussion was the concern about some of the females that work late on whether or not they want to go into the parking garage. And Don Sherman told me that they did a security evaluation, and he said that's available. Have we taken a look at that security evaluation?
I'm glad you asked. I reached out to John Seifert on that, and he said he was going to look into it. I have not heard back from him on that, so I will ask him again about that.
Okay, well, I want to make sure everyone feels safe. As far as that goes, I know we, one of the things that we're voting on is to approve the memorandum of agreement for the parking for the future. I have no worry on where I park, okay? So if someone would feel more secure outside, I don't care where I end up parking my vehicle. As long as I've got a parking place, that's all I care about. So if you end up with folks that feel more secure parking outside than rather than in a parking garage, I'm happy to park anywhere. And I think most of the folks would defer to anyone that feels that they would want the security of parking outside. One question on parking, you said we're going to have 10 visitor parking places. Are they going to have to pay for those, or are they just reserved? And when they leave, how do, how do they indicate that they can park there for free?
Oh, I'm going to have to remember. Andrew, do you, do you remember on that? I think that we get a certain number, boy, I'm really forgetting on this. I think we get a certain amount free per month, and then once we go beyond that, we'll have to pay. And then the department will have to validate that. And I am, I really apologize, I'm forgetting my numbers on that, so I may have to come back with it.
But if they're parking in these 10 slots that we're already paying for, why would we have a limit on the number of times people can park in those 10 slots?
Do you, are you remembering anything, Andrew?
Andrew Deltz, Director of Facilities, good morning. My recollection is that the 10 slots are identified as Sedgwick County visitor parking. We're paying for those. It's, it's not an issue for them to use them. If we go over that, then what Tanya said is correct, that we will pay for any additional parking over the 10 stalls that are used that day.
Okay, but say that I pulled into one of those 10 slots. I had to pull a ticket when I drove into the parking garage. How do I get out of that parking garage now?
Yeah, I believe that they bring that ticket inside, and Sedgwick County will validate that ticket somehow so that when they leave the parking garage, they just check and balance that we have so many people using that stall that day. And if we go over 10 at a given time, we'll be, we'll be paying for more.
Okay, but how are they going to know that these people parked in the 10 slots and these other two or three people parked in other slots over there so that we don't get dinged for going over?
I, I don't know how, I don't know how Ruffin's managing that aspect of it.
Okay, well, I want to make sure that the public has access to our facilities, and they shouldn't have to pay to park in those facilities. But by the same token, I want to make sure that we don't get overcharged by Ruffin because people are using the free, the things that we're already paying for. So it's just a concern, try and take a look at that for the future.
Yep, we'll, we'll look into it, and I'll add, each time I've been over there, which granted, we're going to be busier over there once we're occupying it, there's free parking on the street all the way around the building.
Yeah, and that's where I parked when Papuna and I went over, so. Okay, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure this is already the plan, but just want to confirm, those four courtrooms will be ready before the end of the year?
October 2023.
Okay, that's true, now I see it. The extra parking spaces, it comes down to about $2 per day per vehicle in that new lot. How does that compare to the, is 110 spaces that we have in that contract that's in the parking garage? How does that, what was the cost for the 110 spaces at the parking garage? Remember what that was total?
It's part of our lease. I mean, there's, there's no charge to us for that. I mean, it's part of the $16 per square foot that we're paying.
Okay, so we don't have that, we don't have that broken out? If we need, okay. I think to Chairman's, Chairman's point, if someone does go over our allotted 10 spaces, we need to have an account set up so that we don't charge those folks that are contending they're one of our visitors. If they go over that number, we have to be able to pay that bill on their behalf somehow, right? We don't, we don't expect them to pay for themselves in that case.
I, I would hope that we'd allow the public to park and we'd pay to handle that.
Yes, we'd have to, we'd have to be billed for that extra space somehow.
We will, we will get definitive answers for you on this.
Okay, thank you. I was also curious on the auditorium. Do we have an idea of when that will be online?
We don't, and that is because I'm still waiting on the lead times for the AV equipment. And until I know that, I can't tell you when that, that room will be ready.
Thank you. On one of the slides, the costs, there's a lot of red on that slide, the numbers changed quite a bit. You know, what I'm talking about, updated additional moving costs. Do we not know about the network costs? We didn't, we didn't have an estimate for that before?
I, I didn't have that cost before, so that, that's why I added that in. I just had the cabling costs, and that was, Mike Elpers provided that information to me, so I added that in. And I don't know, Lindsey, I don't know if you had that in your ARPA cost. So Lindsey's saying, no, we didn't have that information before, so we added that in.
This is a bit of a surprising slide. I mean, it went basically almost double the, their initial estimates. One of the biggest line items on here that's changed is the tenant improvements. I guess I have no idea what we're doing, I saw the pictures obviously, but I've not been over there since, since before those improvements began. But I want to make sure we're not doing things that are, I guess unnecessary. I don't want, I don't want to improve the building too much because again, this is a temporary space. I want to make sure we fit the building rather than make changes that we can live with. Some things we can live with, we don't have to change everything. So I don't know where you draw that line, but that's a pretty big number. Went from $167,000 to nearly half a million dollars in that one line item, so it's a little bit surprising to me, but thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. First of all, a little clarification. This building, this room is going to be the last thing we tear down from what I understand. Because if we're not ready to go over into the auditorium, we're going to continue to meet in this location. So it may be a little unhandy for some folks because we may have to go back and forth for a period of time. But this is the last thing that's going to be torn down. That, that's correct.
That is correct.
Very good. The other thing is it's going to be a little unhandy for a period of time while we're over there. HR's not coming along with us, a lot of the different things, people that we work with every day that have very easy access to this building aren't going to have easy access to all of us. So I know there's some stress throughout the organization on this move, and I truly understand that. But Andrew and Tanya are working very hard to make this as smooth a move as we can have. So please do not add stress to Andrew and Tanya on this move. They are doing a fantastic job to make sure that this move is as smooth as possible. So I support what their efforts are, they're doing a great job. And I just want to make sure that the entire organization that's having to move understands that. I have, I back them completely on the decisions that they're making, and I trust their decisions. So please do not add to their stress, okay?
Thank you, Chairman.
I don't see any other questions or comments, but I appreciate what you're doing, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And I move that we approve the memorandum of agreement and authorize made aside. We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Hi.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners.
Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item Q, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on May 12, 2022.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. Our regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on May 12 has resulted in eight items that we bring before you this morning. Item number one is Media Buyer Manager's Office, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from J2 Design Solutions LLC. They're doing business as Lifeboat Creative, and this will be for a contract period of one year with two one-year options to renew. And this will be partially funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. Our second item is the contract extension to the contract number 4106-9, which is National Screening Bureau Contract for Human Resources. And we're asking, the recommendation is to extend the contract with National Screening Bureau LLC through the period, date ending, or through, excuse me, October 12, 2023. Item number three, Contractor Install Pavement Markings, Methylmethacrylate for Public Works. And this recommendation is to accept the bid from Traffic Control Services Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $336,472.20. Item number four is Treatment Chemicals and Services for Closed and Open Loop HVAC Systems for Facilities Maintenance. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Kim Treat Incorporated for the contracted annual pricing shown, which will be effective starting July 1, 2022, and will go for a period of two years with three one-year options to renew. Item number five, Winch Truck Fleet Management Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Kenworth Truck Company, Division of Pack Car Incorporated, based on the Sourcewell Contract 060920 KTC, and that's in the amount of $131,402. Item number six, Bobcap Compact Track Loader for Fleet Management Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the quote from White Star Machinery and Supply. It's based on the NASPO Contract SW0192, and it's in the amount of $74,764.85. Item number seven, Health EMS Subscription Renewal for Emergency Medical Services. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Sanseo Health EMS, and that's in the amount of $86,400. And our final item is Cox Communications Commercial Services Agreement, point-to-point circuit for information, Division Information Technology. And this recommendation is to accept the quote from Cox Communications Kansas LLC, and it's in the amount of $79,560. And this project is funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may, may have, and I recommend approval.
Well, thank you, Joe. You've always been very busy. I don't see any questions whatsoever, move to approve Board of Bids and Contracts. We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate it. Tell Jim Webber he's a chicken, he left before I had any questions about his trucks, okay? Madam Clerk, next item.
Item AH, Payroll Check Register for May 7, 2022.
Mr. Kaufman.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager, recommend approval of consent agenda items R through AH.
Thank you. Move to approve items Romeo through Alpha Hotel. We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Hi. And at this time, I'd like to recess the meeting for the Board of County Commissioners for May 18. Call to order a governing body of Fire District Number One for May 18, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item.
Rule call.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Does anyone wish to speak on public agenda today? Seeing nothing, and Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of March 9, 2022.
Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from March 9 to March 23 and March, and April 27. Move to approve. We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Hi. Next item, please.
Item B, Fire Meeting Minutes of March 23, 2022.
Mr. Kaufman.
Commissioner recommend approval of the consent agenda.
D. Move to approve item Delta. We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Howell.
Hi.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Hi. And at this time, I'd like to adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One meeting and call back to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for May 18. Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative Issues.
And we've already discussed legislative issues at length, so we're going to skip that. Next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Anyone have any committee reports that they'd like to brief today? Commissioner Meitzner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Sheriff Easter for being available on about three different Zoom calls this last week and weekend to reemphasize the, the fentanyl problem. And I think it's caught some, and thank you for the Communication Department because it seems like the fentanyl has really elevated itself in the local media. And I just want to thank him for that. And I also want to thank the Finance Department and Manager for showing up at the SCAC, the Sedgwick County Association from Cities Meeting. Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Cruz were there also, and we had a nice presentation and explanation of ARPA. So thank you to the Finance for that support. And there's probably another meeting or two, but. probably another meeting or two, but those are the thank yous. Very good. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did attend the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, we call CJCC. Unfortunately, I don't know exactly what their level of participation is for them to have a quorum, but we did not have a quorum this year, this week. And we meet quarterly. And the intent of CJCC is to find ways to manage the criminal population in Sedgwick County rather than just doing adult detention, trying to find other ways to manage the population in the community. And we always talk about things like mental health and recidivism and jail population rates and things like that. There was a very good discussion this week on those issues, but we had, we did not have participation from the members. And so I'd like to encourage members that are assigned to that committee to find a delegate, I guess, so we can have a quorum. There's been some discussion whether we need to maybe cancel, or should say disband the CJCC because there seems to be a lack of interest perhaps by, by the community, I suppose. So anyway, that is a concern. But the other part I wanted to mention, each member does have the option for a delegate. So if you haven't, for anybody might be listening, we have options for having delegates who actually can be voting members in this case to take our spot on that CJCC. The other thing that was mentioned there is there seems to be a lot of concern about potential for people coming to Wichita regarding the value them both amendment on the Kansas Constitutional Amendment this summer, which is going to be coming up on the August, I think, August 2nd primary election, I believe. There's a concern about Wichita being a focal point for the nation because this will be the first, perhaps, opportunity for the nation to speak. If the US Supreme Court does in fact make a decision regarding Roe v. Wade, then there's concern, I think, that Kansas may get additional attention. And so there's concerns about potential violence in our community and how this might relate to a lot of attention from the nation. So I wanted to just mention that. I think we need to be very vigilant and have a plan and to know that this is, this is being discussed. And there are concerns right now about Wichita specifically and how this might relate to not just the Roe v. Wade decision, but especially the Kansas Constitutional Amendment that's coming on the primary election. So there is concerns about that. We might need to have a discussion at some point regarding a plan. If some of those fears prove to be true, come true, then we need to have a plan before that date to know what we're going to deal with that type of activity in our community. So I wanted to share that with the Commissioners this morning. I do think it's an item we need to be aware of. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we're all under the, we all have the correct information. This is a special election, so it includes every single registered voter. Primaries generally are Democrat, Republican. This is a special election where everyone can vote if you're a registered voter in this special election, August 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to echo Commissioner Meitzner's comments on fentanyl. It was just a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Cruz and I attended a meeting that the sheriff was, started to bring to knowledge of the Commission exactly how serious that this issue is today. And as a result of that, we had a staff meeting, and we started discussing it further. But the biggest concern we've got is that a lot of schools are getting out tomorrow. And as a result, we had a very, very short period of time in order to be able to let parents know and the students know how serious that this issue is. I want to congratulate our Communications Department and everyone that's been involved in this because it doesn't matter what channel I've turned on lately, there is a large news article package on fentanyl. And so the word is getting out. We just, Commissioner Cruz and I, we were just in a meeting this week where Terry Moses talked about what USD 259 was doing. So there was recently, I know Commissioner Meitzner and I were on a Zoom call with the sheriff, and Commissioner Howell was on that, and the DA and a number of other people, but mainly school superintendents from across the county so to get the word out on what's happening with the drug fentanyl and how serious it is and that one pill can kill. So I appreciate Commissioner Meitzner in bringing it up, but I really appreciate the work of our staff to help get the community informed on how serious that this issue is. Well, thank you. I don't see anything else to come up under committee reports. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Any Commissioners have anything for other today? Seeing nothing, we have no executive session today. Anything else need to come before the Board of County Commissioners? Seeing nothing. Adjourned. Thank you all. No, not problem. Pete knew who he was.